Do you want to Chuck? Do you want to?
I don't think I have a big deal like that. I don't know.
Good morning. I'm going to call to order the public meeting for May 22, 2018. To my left is Ron Carl, the county attorney. To my far right is Jolene Sanchez, the assistant clerk to the board. Ms. Sanchez, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Sharp is absent and excused?
Correct.
Commissioner Conti?
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Carl, are there any modifications to the agenda this morning?
There are no modifications to the agenda.
I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Conti, seconded by Commissioner Holland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, that motion carries. We have two ceremonies this morning, which sometimes these are times of happy retirement and times when we're sad to see people go. The first one that we have is for Holly Vassino. So Holly, would you come up or mark? I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution, but I just would like you both up here. I'm going to make a motion for approval of Resolution Number 180, I believe it is. Whereas Holly Vassino began her employment with Arapahoe County Assessor's Office as a temporary employee on March 30, 1992, and was hired as a permanent full-time customer service clerk I on August 21, 1992. During Holly's 26-year tenure, she held a variety of positions such as Admin Clerk I, Secretary II, Administrative Assistant Business Associate IV, Admin Budget Specialist, and will retire as an Administrative Budget Coordinator on June 1, 2018. And whereas Holly has been an invaluable member of the Assessor family, always knowledgeable, available, professional, and proactive with our taxpayers and her peers. Her willingness to help other departments take on any task, reach out to those in need, and troubleshoot any task has been a huge contribution to the office's success and the great reputation of the Assessor's Office, which the Assessor's Office maintains. And whereas other duties is assigned, was taken to new levels through Holly's selfless representation of the Assessor's Office with the COOP Plan, Executive Safety Committee, Web Redesign Team, Performance Review Form Redesign Team, Employee Annual Lunch Team, EDMS Team, Elitch's and Rocky's Liaison to Arapahoe County, and along with the countless items given to her daily by the Assessor's executive staff, she successfully completed all of the tasks given to her, both flawlessly and seamlessly. And whereas Holly, serving as the go-to person, will be highly missed by the Assessor's Office, which depends on her greatly for keeping us all on track and moving forward. And whereas Holly's positive and compassionate attitude, especially with law enforcement personnel seeking confidentiality from open records, was always present and effortlessly displayed. And whereas during her more than 26 years of public service to Arapahoe County, her dedication, knowledge, and willingness to help others has made her a valuable asset to the Assessor's Office and Arapahoe County. And whereas Holly will now enjoy a well-deserved retirement by spending more time with her husband, John, and their beloved furry four-legged children, Enzo, Hila, and Basio. Though more importantly, she'll be able to rest and relax. And whereas Holly will be sincerely missed by her coworkers, her co-committee members, and the executive staff, we truly appreciate Holly's help and friendship. Her ability to get the job done and serve her peers and the citizens of Arapahoe County with efficiency, quality, and honorable integrity has been a daily pleasure. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Arapahoe County to officially recognize the contributions that Holly Vassino has made as a valued employee to Arapahoe County and hereby declares that her future shall prosper as Arapahoe County has under her dedication and service. Motion made by Commissioner Baker and seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions or opposition? None should be forthcoming. Congratulations, Holly. So a few words from Mark Scott, our assessor.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Yeah, these retirements are often hard. This one is difficult. Holly's been our total go-to person day in, day out, for as long as I've been here. And you know, we were thinking of some of the things we'll miss with Holly, and it's a long list. I won't read it to you. But everyone here will recognize some of this. Well, Ms. Enzo, who used to come visit us on Fridays, on casual Fridays, and you'd walk into Holly's Cube and there's this 180-pound mastiff staring you in the face. So you're very careful about tiptoeing. Holly has just been a total workhorse for us. And I think the one thing that probably describes it the best is when we have employee appreciation lunches at the benefit of the commissioners. While we're all enjoying the lunch, Holly works the employee appreciation lunch. So she's the first one to volunteer and first one to step up and do the work. And you know, without asking for additional recognition or additional kudos, she just, that's what she does. Everybody knows Holly. They may not know her title. They may not even know her phone number, but they know Holly. And when you go to the sheriff's office, she can get you into the sheriff's store over there. You can buy sheriff stuff.
Where can I go shopping? At the store. A lot. A lot.
So it's going to be different without Holly here. We're going to miss her a lot. And words are not enough to say we really appreciate all you've done for us for all the years you've been here. But Holly's one of the first people you meet when you go to work at the Assessor's Office and you realize pretty quickly, when in doubt, chuck with Holly. We'll figure it out. So Holly, we're going to miss you and wish you the best. So best of all. You deserve it.
I'm sure there are other commissioners that want to say a few things before we turn the mic over to you for a few words. Commissioner Jackson first.
Well, I was going to talk about this thing I have with Holly because of the wonderful work she does at the appreciation lunches and how many times I'm hung out at the jail with you. And it's true. And you're always there and you're always with great spirits. And I will miss that. I will miss hanging out with you at those lunches and hearing all the stories and so on. So I really wish you the very best with your large dogs. Is that right? Yeah? Okay. All right. So I just wish you a happy journey, but we will miss you.
Commissioner Holland?
You know, the people of Arapahoe County who you have served for so many years don't really appreciate how hard you and the staff work to make sure that they're accurate in the assessments of their properties as well as understanding the importance that your job has to basically fund everything that goes on in the county. And for that, we're very, very grateful. I just hope that you're, well, I know that you will enjoy your retirement and be able to sleep in a little bit. That's one of the things I'm looking forward to. Thank you very much for what you do.
Commissioner Conti.
Holly, it has been a joy to get to know you. And I shall never, I hope that you'd be willing to give me your, you know, personal contact number because not only have you been just a wealth of information, anytime I had a house in my district that I needed to know some information about, you know, to be faithful to get that to me post haste. But of course, anytime, many of you know, my son has a half mastiff, half German shepherd that 95 pounds came into my home that is not my dog, but yet I have to live with. And Holly has been a wealth of information and knowledge about trying to help me deal with that as this dog has come in that I did not ask for. So anyway, I thank you so much, all your guidance, all your suggestions and your tips. And you've been just, I got sense, so thank you and enjoy retirement.
Holly, the mic is yours.
This is hard. So I'm just going to get it up there. It's been an honor to be here all this time, and I have made some of the best friendships. I've spent half my life here. And I don't want to be the crybaby. So I just want to thank all of you for everything, for all the opportunities I've been given, the education, all the friendships, all the committees, everything. And it's going to be very hard, but I will tell you, I'm not going to be gone on. I will bring Enzo back on my Fridays so that he can see everybody and maybe Basio if we can get him to calm down a little bit. So, but thank you, everybody, for everything, for all the beautiful friendships and for all the opportunities from both of you. And that's in the lead of that.
Thank you. Stay up there, Mark, because we've got another one. This one is for Richard Schroeder. Richard, welcome. I'm going to move that the Board of County Commissioners approve this resolution. Whereas Richard Schroeder began his employment with Arapahoe County as a temporary employee in January 2001 and will retire from the Assessor's Office on June 1, 2018. And whereas Richard was hired permanently as a data collector on December 21, 2001, as a shared employee with the residential and personal property departments, subsequently reclassified as an appraiser II in July 2008. And whereas Richard's dedication, dependability, knowledge of both real and personal property appraisal, along with his patience, professionalism, and eagerness to assist the public, has made him an instrumental member of our office. And whereas Richard's tremendous heart compassion, generosity, kindness, and humor, humorous spirit, has made him a pleasure to work with. And whereas Richard's photography skills will be sorely missed as he was instrumental in updating the photo database and developing the process for tracking and valuing mobile or manufactured homes for real property, and his ability to locate a business or mobile home is second to none. And whereas the office will be quieter without Rick, without Rick sharing his colorful and entertaining tales of field work experiences that he's encountered during his tenure. And whereas retirement will afford Richard more time to garden, visit family, talk politics, and volunteer in his new community. And whereas Richard's over-the-top personality will be dearly missed by all that he has worked with, but especially by his coworkers in the personal property division. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Arapahoe County to officially recognize the contributions that Richard Schroeder has made as a valued employee of Arapahoe County and hereby declares that his future shall prosper as Arapahoe County has under his dedication and service. I didn't. Motion made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Those of you who know Rick will just understand you could sit up here for hours and tell stories. And those of you who don't, I wish you did. We're going to miss Rick. You know, Rick splits his time between residential and personal property. And I think it's the last appraiser we have that does that. And there are several things that come off the colorful adjective that was in the resolution. I think interesting comes up. Rick's always interesting, always has something interesting to say and different view on things. So it's just fun to talk to Rick. But one of the things that Rick has a great work ethic, spent a lot of time in the eastern part of the county. And with Phil O'Hare, they did a lot of PR work. They did a lot of real work in cataloging, whether it's mobile homes, manufactured homes, modular, all the work out east. But Rick takes the time to sit and talk to the taxpayers. And a lot of times, they're not the happiest to hear from the Assessor's Office. And if you're in a hurry and you're just busy and here's what we want and you leave, it leaves them with a bad taste in their mouth. When they talk to Rick for 10 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, an hour, whatever it takes, they feel they've been heard. They feel they have a friend in the Assessor's Office. Rick's been a great PR, a great ambassador for us in the eastern part of the county. And a lot of the goodwill that we have out there and the county has out there is because of Rick Schroeder. Rick, as you know, also has a legacy in Arapahoe County, starting with Catherine, who served as county attorney for many years. And you know, the county owes him great gratitude for the work he did. So Rick, we're going to miss you. We know you're going to have a ball. We just, we wish we'd hear about it from time to time. So congratulations and thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
And I'm sure commissioners have a comment. Do you want to go first this time? Commissioner Conti?
Thank you. And Rick, I'm so sorry that I did not have better opportunity to get to know you, but it sounds like you were out in the field being a wonderful ambassador. As I was reading, you know, and listening to Commissioner Baker read about all these incredible skills, I thought, wow, he could go, he sounds perfectly suited to go to work for a private investigator. So thank you so much for your wonderful years of dedication, your work as being an ambassador. And you will be sorely missed, I am absolutely certain. Thank you.
Commissioner Holland?
It's the, Rick, you kind of exemplified the adage that it's the little things that really matter. And what you've done in terms of your goodwill and involvement with the community and calming down agitated constituents, I'm sure you had many, many stories about that. But it's that level of commitment and personal personality that really helps make this government run efficiently and effectively. And I personally want to thank you for all the work that you've done over the years. And you certainly will be missed by your colleagues and the entire county government. So thank you.
Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. So who could have guessed that we would be soon seeing a movie or reading a book called My Life as an Assessor? You know? It was, it sounds like you do have a whole pocket full of stories to tell. And I was just thinking, as the resolution was being read and as Mark was speaking, like, wow, you know, this sounds like something that everybody would want to hear about, all these great stories. So I wish you well, and I am sure I could see the gleam in your eye from up here that you're only going to be doing more and having new adventures. And I wish you well in all of those. And I do want to thank you for your services, as has been said, your ambassadorship and the way that you have treated our citizens individually with great respect. And I think we all appreciate that. So thank you for that and give my love to Catherine.
And Rick, the mic is yours.
Well, I'd just like to say goodbye to everybody. It's been great. This is the one job I've had many in my life that I actually never, didn't want to come to work the next day. I always enjoyed coming in. It's been a better family than my real family. Better birthday parties, better Christmases, better Thanksgivings. Then I got it home and I'm going to miss you all. And thanks for the time, thanks for having me.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on in the agenda to citizen comment period. I will note that we do have several items under the general business agenda that will probably be having allowed for public comment. But this is the time that if there are any citizens present to address the Board of County Commissioners on something that's not already on the agenda, we'll be allowing three-minute time limit unless otherwise noted. So are there any citizens here to address anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the comment period. And we have two sets of minutes to approve today. The first set of minutes comes from April 24, and I believe that Commissioner Jackson was not present at that meeting. She was absent and excused. So is there any discussion, comments, or questions about the minutes from April 24? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Second? Motion made by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Conti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? One abstention from Commissioner Jackson. And again, today Commissioner Sharp is absent and excused. So the next set of minutes was a full board on May 1, 2018. And are there any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion. Move to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Conti, seconded by Commissioner Holland. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, that motion carries. Our first general business item today is a public hearing on the Kiowa Creek Master Drainage Plan. Our presenter will be Kathleen Valencia, and our attorney on this item is Robert Hill. Mr. Hill, would you please set the foundation for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing on the drainage, master drainage plan for the Kiowa Creek and its tributaries. This has been noticed in the Villager by publication in the Villager. However, because the location of the Kiowa Creek is out east, we want to also have notice, additional notice in the I-70 scout. That wasn't done. So at this point, I think what we would like to do is go through the staff presentation, open public comment, and then continue the hearing to a date certain, at which time to allow for additional notice in the I-70 scout. And then we would bring it back at that continued date for the board's final decision on the request.
Any commissioner questions or comments at this time? If not, then I would like Kathleen to come forward. Good morning.
All right, good morning. My name is Kathleen Valencia, and I'm an engineer with Public Works and Development. This morning, I would like to present to you the Kiowa Creek Master Drainage Plan, which we have recently completed, and why we would like to have the plan adopted. This plan was presented to the Planning Commission on April 17, and a study session with the board was held on May 1. The purpose of the plan was to delineate the 100-year floodplain, determine whether crossing structures are adequately sized, and determine what is required to stabilize the creek for future flows. The vicinity map of Kiowa Creek, it's out east toward Bennett, between Box Elder Creek and Wolf Creek. So just to show you some pictures of the Kiowa Creek basin so you can get an idea of what is in the basin, as you can see, it is rural with around 140 homes within the Kiowa Creek is a northward flowing creek with headwaters in El Paso County. The creek winds its way through Elbert County and into Arapahoe County, eventually flowing into the South Platte River. The portion of the creek that was studied is within Arapahoe County from the Elbert County line to the Adams County line. The watershed is 275 square miles, of which 42 square miles was studied for this MDP. Kiowa Creek was studied because it is the first creek just east of the urban drainage and flood control district boundary. And we're preparing for development as it moves eastward. This slide shows the FEMA 100-year approximate floodplain. This floodplain was determined due to Our presenter will be Kathleen Valencia, and our attorney on this item is Robert Hill. Mr. Hill, would you please set the foundation for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing on the drainage, master drainage plan for the Kiowa Creek and its tributaries. This has been noticed in The Villager by publication in The Villager. However, because the location of the Kiowa Creek is out east, we want to also have notice, additional notice in the I-70 scout. That wasn't done. So, at this point, I think what we would like to do is go through the staff presentation, open public comment, and then continue the hearing to a date certain, at which time to allow for additional notice in the I-70 scout. And then, we would bring it back at that continued date for the board's final decision on the request.
Any Commissioner questions or comments at this time? If not, then I would like Kathleen to come forward. Good morning.
My name is Kathleen Valencia, and I'm an engineer with Public Works and Development. This morning, I would like to present to you the Kiowa Creek Master Drainage Plan, which we have recently completed, and why we would like to have the plan adopted. This plan was presented to the Planning Commission on April 17th, and a study session with the board was held on May 1st. The purpose of the plan was to delineate the 100-year floodplain, determine whether crossing structures are adequately sized, and determine what is required to stabilize the creek for future flows. The vicinity map of Kiowa Creek, it's out east toward Bennett, between Box Elder Creek and Wolf Creek. So, just to show you some pictures of the Kiowa Creek basin, so you can get an idea of what is in the basin. As you can see, it is rural with around 140 homes within the basin. Kiowa Creek is a northward-flowing creek with headwaters in El Paso County. The creek winds its way through Albert County and into Arapahoe County, eventually flowing into the South Platte River. The portion of the creek that was studied is within Arapahoe County from the Albert County line to the Adams County line. The watershed is 275 square miles, of which 42 square miles was studied for this MDP. Kiowa Creek was studied because it is the first creek just east of the urban drainage and flood control district boundary. And we're preparing for development as it moves eastward. This slide shows the FEMA 100-year approximate floodplain. This floodplain was determined using approximate methods, which means that a hydraulic analysis was not performed, and therefore, there are no base flood elevations. We now have an accurate floodplain delineation along Kiowa Creek and its tributaries. As you can see with the light blue, the new floodplain is narrower than the approximate floodplain, and there are no structures within 100-year floodplain. And now, we have the tributaries mapped. This basin will remain mostly rural in the future, with North of Sixth Avenue seeing the biggest increase in development. Most of the increased future flow that we see in the basin is due to development upstream in Albert and El Paso Counties. There are three bridges that cross the creek: East County Line Road on the south end of the county, Quincy Road, on I, Quincy Road and I-70 on the north end of the county. It was determined that all three bridges are undersized to pass the future 100-year flow with the required freeboard. And here's just some pictures of the three bridges: the I-70 Bridge, Quincy, and County Line Road Bridge. There were numerous tributaries to Kiowa Creek that were studied along with the main stem. These tributaries cross Frick Center Road in many areas, as well as Quincy Road and a few private roads. It was also determined that these stormwater culverts are undersized to pass future flows. Here are a couple pictures of the existing bank erosion along some of the tributaries. It was determined that grade control structures would be required in many places throughout the tributaries in order to stabilize the creek. This slide shows a grade control structure using boulders. So, after completion of the master drainage plan, we now have an accurate 100-year floodplain. We know that crossing structures need to be upsized to pass future flows, and we know that grade control structures will be needed to help stabilize the creek for future flows. A cost summary was also done for all the improvements that would be required. This shows a total capital cost of almost $80 million. We're planning a study session with the board to determine whether a basin fee would make sense to alleviate the cost of the required infrastructure. So, at this time, we ask that the board adopt the master drainage plan to be used as a guide as development occurs in the basin after the couple weeks that we have to allow for the scout.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Jackson first.
I'll just say that because this impacts so many of the folks out on the plains, I think it is a good idea to postpone until all those, all those folks are notified. So, I would concur with that recommendation.
Commissioner Holan?
Just a question on the, on the bridge expansion. Are you, can you kind of describe what kind of improvements are needed?
They're requiring that the bridge be completely redone because it's too low to pass the 100-year flow.
So, it has to be, the whole bridge has to be raised?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments? Commissioner?
And I am assuming that we will be working with being interstate federal partners, as well as state?
Interstate?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Well?
Oh, for I-70?
Yes.
Yes. I think we took that cost out of the cost estimate because I think that would be a C-dot project at the I-70 bridge.
Okay. So, the $80 million is without I-70?
No, that includes I-70.
That include, thank you. Okay, I was gonna have heart palpitations. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, funding is something to be considered in the future, and will, of course, as with any project, leverage as many resources for those funds as possible. At this time, if we were to make a motion, Mr. Hill, is there a date certain that we've identified?
I do not believe we have.
Okay.
I think we need at least three weeks to get the notice published in the scout, so any time after three weeks, the board's...
Commissioner Jackson?
There is, there is no time, so if we just do it at the end of June, that would probably suffice.
Yep, that'll be fine.
So, maybe the last Tuesday in June? I'll see if I can find out what that is.
In the meantime, while we're looking up that date, I'm going to open public hearing, unless there are any other questions for Kathy.
June 26th.
Okay.
June 26th.
Any other questions for Kathy? If not, I'm going to open public comment period. Are there any citizens of the public that have signed up to talk about this? Or, okay, anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue with the Board of County Commissioners? Seeing none, I am going to leave the public comment period open, and when we reschedule this to June 26th, we'll allow another public comment period that may come, public may see the advertisement and want to come and voice their opinion on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will make a motion to continue this, there we go, in the matter of the Kiowa Creek Drainage Master Plan for Kiowa Creek and its tributaries within unincorporated Arapahoe County, case number C-15-006. I move to continue consideration of the request to adopt the plan on the 26th day of June 2018, or thereabouts, in order to allow for further and additional notice of the hearing to consider the plan by publication in the I-70 scout. Motion made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Conti. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, that motion carries, and that matter is continued. The next item is a general business item for case number FDP-17-002 Copperleaf Number 16 Starbucks Request. Our presenter is Kat Hammer, Kathleen Hammer, and our attorney is, once again, Robert Hill. Would you lay the foundation for this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an application for an FDP for a Starbucks, as noted. The application in case would be eligible for the streamlined procedure and otherwise would have been as a consent agenda item, so there has been no specific notice. However, because the applicant wanted to ask for some relief from Planning Commission's recommendations, pardon me, with regard to the sign code requirements under the FDP, they scheduled this for a business item for the board's iteration.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Commissioners. The application proposes to allow for the construction of a 200, or 2,200-square-foot Starbucks building on a newly-created lot in Copperleaf, and the proposed development will include a drive-through, outdoor seating, and 27 parking spaces and adequate landscaping. There was a public hearing held at the Planning Commission regarding this application on May 1st, 2018. No members of the public were present at this meeting. I want to note that a motion was made to allow for deviations from the sign regulations as requested by the applicant. That motion failed on a three-to-four vote, and then, after that motion, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend requiring the development meet the sign regulations. Since then, the applicant has submitted a revised sign plan that will be passed out. I want to note that the staff can support this revised size, sign plan, as it is less than what was previously requested. I want to note that the revised sign plan does exceed what would be allowed by the county's sign regulations, but staff has noted that this site is included in a proposed small size commercial center, and signage greater than what's allowed by the land development code can be supported by staff. It was my understanding that the applicant would have a representative here who might be able to speak. I'm not sure if that is the case, but I stand for any questions, and if the applicant is here, I invite them to make their case.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hammer? Yes, Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you. These pictures are really helpful, so thank you for that. So, help me understand, because I do not have the sign code memorized, which of these signs, if any, or is it just the fact that it's on all four sides that is out of compliance?
So, I can give you a little rundown of what they're requesting. So, the sign code today allows for wall signs on three facades, and they're requesting on four facades. As part of the letter height, the code allows 18-inch letter height, and they are requesting 22-inch letter height.
So, in two regards, just to be clear, the sign height, the lettering height, as well as the fact that they want four instead of three?
Correct.
So, those are the two modifications we're...
As well as the logo height.
The logo height?
Yes. The logo height is permitted to be 1.5 times the letter height, so that would be roughly 28 inches, 27, 28 inches, and they're requesting 42 on the logo height.
So, 28 to 42?
Correct.
Okay, so that's three modifications they're asking for.
There might be more. Let me double-check my notes here.
So, we've got lettering height, logo height, and four instead of three?
Yes, and then, also, the top of building sign on the south elevation is not permitted because it is across the street from residential, planned residential. So, staff can support that sign only if it is on a timer that requires the lighting in that sign to be turned off after business hours.
That the lettering sign that's lit, or a logo sign that's lit?
Let me double-check here what they're proposing. The south elevation has a logo. They're proposing one logo.
I believe that's lighted, is that correct?
Yes, they've indicated they want their sign...
So, the back of the building with the ladder on it, that little sign will be lit?
Yes, and staff is requesting that, or will only support that sign if it is on a timer to be turned off after business hours.
Okay, and I just sort of wanted to clarify what, what we're asked to be discussing. Okay, thank you.
And let me ask one more question, and then Commissioner Conti. And wasn't it, if you can kind of summarize what the Planning Commission's reasoning, stated reasoning was for not approving, was there one of these modifications that they were especially, or was it a combination of all of?
I would say the concerns came with the, definitely the sign on the south side being illuminated for those residential properties, as well as just the fact that there was a lot of deviations. They felt that that was, they were requesting a lot. So, since then, the applicant has come back with smaller logo heights and smaller letter height.
Okay. And were any referrals on this matter sent to the developer? Did we get any opinion from the Copperleaf folks?
The Copperleaf folks, I don't believe gave any feedback in writing, but they were at the Planning Commission meeting. They spoke highly of the applicant and made a statement indicating that the sign code was about 15, 16 years old, and they would hate to lose this development over signage.
Commissioner Conti?
Yeah, you had commented that you wanted the logo signs to be turned off at, after business hours, and I just wondered, what are their business hours? Is that like 2 o'clock in the afternoon, or is that 6 o'clock at, or 10 o'clock at night, or what?
I'm not sure exactly what their business hours are, but speaking of other Starbucks, I've seen them close at 10:00 PM.
Okay. And if there's an applicant here, we, well, we can ask that question. That's important. Any other questions for Kat? Not at this time. Is there an applicant here, a representative of the applicant? And this is a general business item, so there's no public hearing authorized. Is there somebody that's here to speak to that? Seeing none. I will say that that was my one concern. This is in my area, and I know the, the location pretty well, and I agree with the signage being on a timer. I think that, is that a condition of approval?
We have revised conditions.
Okay.
I passed on an additional or alternate motion.
Correct, okay.
This condition about the timer.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with that. Any other comments or concerns from any of the Commissioners?
Print the right one?
I don't see a timer.
Oh, condition number three, second, last sentence.
On the south elevation. Are we gonna require that only on the south elevation?
That's the only one facing residential.
Okay.
The rest is facing Quincy, and there's residential across the street, but the distance is, am I correct in that assumption? Yeah. And I agree that right now, the condition of approval is for a timer to shut it off at the close of business, but I think if a timer is installed, that timer can be adjusted based on community input at such time as those houses are built, and people that reside there could approach these folks and say, hey, look, I've got a three-year-old that goes to bed at, well, 10-year-old that goes to bed at 8 o'clock, could you turn it off at 8? And work that out, and I'm sure that that's something that, at least mechanically, that could be done with a timer. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? I'd like to make a motion in this case to approve with conditions. In the case of P-17-002 Copperleaf 16 Starbucks Coffee Company Final Development Plan, the County Commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and any public comment as presented at the public hearing. I hereby move to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant must address Public Works staff comments and concerns. Two, approval of application P-17-002 Copperleaf Number 16 Starbucks Coffee Company FDP is conditioned on the approval of Copperleaf filing number six, number 16, replat, which will establish the lot depicted in the P-17-022 FDP. Three, signage is permitted on all four elevations of the building. Letter height must not exceed 22 inches, and logo height must not exceed 42 inches. Any signage that is illuminated on the south elevation must be on a timer to shut off at close of business. Outdoor lighting must not exceed 0.3-foot candles, as measured from the residential lot lines to the south of the parcel. Five, the applicant must follow Excel Energies and Public Service of Company, Public Service Company of Colorado's standards for improvements within easements. Motion made by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Conti. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Next item on the agenda is a general business item, ordinance number 2018-01, banning the sale, use, and possession of fireworks. The county attorney, Ron Carl, will be the attorney in this case, and Mr. Carl, would you proceed?
Yes. So, yes, again, this is a hearing on proposed ordinance number 2018-01, banning the sale, use, and possession of fireworks in unincorporated Arapahoe County. Notice of this hearing was, along with the text of the proposed ordinance, was published in The Villager newspaper on May 10, 2018, so this board does have jurisdiction to proceed. I would note that there has been a minor change to the wording of the fourth line in the third whereas clause of the ordinance for clarification purposes. I would also note that the board has to make a finding of high fire danger to include... I would also note that the board has to make a finding of high fire danger to include the period from July, or include the period through July 5th, with respect to the fireworks ban. And I would finally note that there are two motions in your packet, one is to adopt the ordinance, and one motion is to continue the matter to June. There is a mistake in that second motion, it should say June 12th, not June 15th. And then, I would like to add that Nate Fogg from the sheriff's office, sheriff's office is here to speak to the fire danger in unincorporated Arapahoe County, and I also believe he will be recommending a continuance to June 12th, so.
Good morning, Nate.
Ron's right, I'm glad for that, continuance until June. You can see everything is pretty green around us right now, so not, fire danger is not high today, we're not at that high level that he mentioned. I do watch this a lot, and in front of me, you can't see it, but I've got 37 pages of information that have come from the predictive services in BLM, the National, I always mess this up, National Institute of, let's see if I get it right, National Institute of Fire C, the C stands for something, it's NIFIC, and I forget what the C is, but they go through, we're talking about antecedent conditions going back to last year. Last year, we had a lot of moisture, this time of year, if you remember, we had a ton of growth, a lot of greenup, a lot of fuel loading. What they see and what we've seen over the winters, it was very dry, antecedent conditions have caused those, that greenup and that heavy fuel loads from last year to not continue to grow this year. So, we have a lot of potential fuel load, looking forward into May and June, based on those studies, we see that reduced, reduced precipitations we've had now, the fuel loads from last year, predictive services indicate that the fire danger through June and into July is going to be elevated, going to be significant. Based on today's conditions, though, I think the continuance to June is...
I have a question, that I understand that we, some, the sheriff's office sometimes does an open burning ban.
Right.
And unlike a lot of other jurisdictions, we either have a burning ban or we don't, and that many jurisdictions in the surrounding area have different levels of an open burn ban, level one, stage one, whatever they call it, and two, with increasing levels of restrictions on things, and sometimes those include fireworks, is that correct, to your knowledge?
Surrounding jurisdictions, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And that could be something that the Board of County Commissioners might be able to consider at some point, maybe following that same type of thing.
Sure, yeah.
And it would preclude an ordinance being instituted every year for something like this, in the event that there's, we're trying to, to think into the future about what conditions will be like, and there's no telling what conditions will be like around the Fourth of July, when a lot of fireworks stands set up, and there is a benefit from those stands with the tax revenue that they do provide, and the enjoyment of our citizens to enjoy Independence Day on the Fourth of July, that an outright ban or an ordinance precluding the sale, use, and possession of fireworks might create some, any law makes a criminal of someone, and that's really what it, what an ordinance would do, would make a criminal of either citizens or vendors that are doing this for their livelihood, and under those conditions where we restrict those. So, I'm just trying to get your opinion about whether or not you feel Arapahoe County should have a gradient scale of open burn ban that could include fireworks as opposed to an ordinance.
I'll defer to Mr. Carl briefly, I believe that those are two separate statutes, there's nothing in the statute that precludes us from implementing a staged ban, that's what you're talking about, you know, your normal restrictions of contact your fire department, a stage one like Adams or Albert might have, that is adding some restrictions to things that are going to admit embers, and then ultimately, an all-out ban on any kind of open fire. The fireworks statute, I think, is a little different when it comes to this period between May 31 and July 5th, so that's a separate issue, I think.
Mr. Carl?
Yeah, and the thing I would add is that when jurisdictions do a fire ban, that's actually under their ordinances, so it also is an ordinance violation if, too, that's involved.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, this gets very technical, I know, and so I appreciate you coming here as our guru of all things emergency, but what kind of is troubling for me is the fact that we can't predict the weather, and we don't know how things are going to be, but if I am planning a fireworks display, I need to be able to know whether or not it's going to be legal for me to have that event, or, you know, that, sell those fireworks, or whatever. So, is there a sweet spot, or a date, or some kind of thing that, because if we, if we, if we were to continue this, when would we revisit it? How would we let all the, our constituents know whether they were going to be able to have fireworks or not? I know that, you know, if you have the fire department there and all that, you can have your, your, your display, but other than that, I mean, can you give us some guidelines on the kinds of things that we'll be looking for, and the kinds of timing, or, or dates, if you will, or something, so that we have some guidance on how to continue this thing?
Do you mind if I?
I don't.
Answer that, okay. So, when this ordinance was originally proposed, the, the fire danger, the predictions were looking very dire. There has been some recent rain, and I think the reason for asking for a continuance is to see how things shake out with the recent rain, also to see what the next prediction is that comes out, because they revise their predictions at the beginning of each month. So, we were thinking it would be useful, in light of the recent rain, to wait and see what the prediction is at the beginning of June.
Okay.
And then, and then reassess whether it, you know, the conditions are such that it makes sense to, at that point, ban fireworks for the Fourth of July season or not, and what we're suggesting is that a motion be made to continue this matter to June 12th, so that's the date that the decision...
That's, that's helpful.
Would be made, so that, that's, that's basically what we're proposing here.
Okay, because what I didn't understand it, was that these predictions are made once a month, because I was thinking, you know, kind of like the stock market or anything, you know, a daily prediction, things are going to change every day, and so there's too much uncertainty, but if the June assessment comes out, and we can see that data, then we will be able to know and prepare for July. Got it?
Right, that's, that's our thinking.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Commissioner Holger?
I think this is kind of a general discussion item, and that is, I'm assuming in the, in the process and preparation for the Fourth of July celebrations, that many business organizations will, will, will commit to buying certain amount of fireworks prior to the June 12th meeting, and then if we ban it, the, there's an economic impact, so I don't know if we need to discuss that as a, as a, an item, to provide enough time for these entrepreneurs to make their decision in terms of purchases and, and rental of space for the sale of those items.
I think those are some things that are definitely open to, for us to discuss, and if we are continuing them, that, continuing this general business item, then that'll give us time and to research that, and I think we have at least one person here today that wants to speak in, about this ordinance, so even though it's a general business item, public comment is not required, I do think I will open up for public comment. Did you have anything else, Mr. Fogg? No? Okay, any other questions for him? If not...
I was just, I was just kind of curious, did you happen to consult with any retailers of these kind of fireworks, to find out what their lead time is, how much, you know, when would be an appropriate date, that they would absolutely have to know by this date in order to meet order deadlines, or those kind of things?
That's a discussion, I'm guessing that the gentleman is going to speak in public comment on these topics, not specifically related to their inventory and their ordering processes, but about the process as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to address the Board of County Commissioners on this issue? I see one, two, I'll, I'll start with the gentleman in white shirt, Brad, if you'll come forward, please state your full name for the record and your address as well, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, it's Brad Witherell, W.I.T.H.E.R.E.L.L., my address is 7361 Fox Creek Trail, Franktown, Colorado, and I'm with the company Davy Jones Fireworks. So, yeah, just, just a couple of things, and thank you for your time, I appreciate it. It, Nate, Nate and I actually had talked on the phone, and the county uses a little bit different website than what the state does as far as fire dangers, but I did research the website that Arapahoe County uses, and it seems to be a credible website, but there's a couple of things that are a little misleading, I did look at a map that Commissioner Baker had showed me for predictions of June, and it's bright red, thinking, you know, danger, and then it was white. Well, if, if you actually look at that map, it's normal or above normal, excuse me, the red would be above normal, now is that slightly above normal, or is it barely above normal? We, we don't know, but within this website, they do a really good job of doing a daily fire assessment, and that's a little bit more, I think what we all would be concerned with, is the beginning of June may be dry, but the end of June may not be dry, so how are you going to gauge the whole month? Where this website actually goes in, and it does, I think, a three or four-day forecast that, that shows what the actual fire conditions are. Obviously, right now, I looked at it this morning, and everything is, is low fire risk, obviously with all the rain and low temperatures and whatnot we have, but of course, that could change, you know, at the end of July and, and, I'm sorry, at the end of June and July. So, hopefully, we would look at the, not the monthly, but, but the daily, to see where we're at and whatnot. And as far as the timing, we order our product back in August, it comes from China, it takes just a month to get here, let alone to produce and whatnot, but our state permits are due 30 days in advance, and the Arapahoe County, typically, they, they take 10 to 12 days, business days, to get a permit from, from the county. As far as, you know, our leases, that depends on, on the company, a lot, most of our leases are done three or four months in advance, so the leases are already in place, I guess, for that. And there's something else, back to that stage one, stage two, which is most of the other counties in, surrounding us, or whatever, typically, stage one bans the sale of fireworks, as well as open burning, and the stage two prohibits the sale and use of fireworks, but not the possession. And the possession, I do have a problem with, because imagine, maybe one of your daughters is going to get married, and you want to buy sparklers for her exit, it may be in November, it may be in December, it may be the winter, it may be a time when there's not a high fire danger. We're only open roughly one week out of the year, so if you purchase those fireworks and hold them, and you live in Arapahoe County, well, now, you're kind of being a criminal because the possession, you're not allowed to possess these fireworks. Or if you're driving across Arapahoe County, let's say, from the city of Parker, where it is legal, and you get pulled over, and you have, you know, cones and sparklers in your backseat, technically, I guess you could get a ticket from the police, because the possession of the fireworks is illegal. So, that's just something for you to think about as well. Nate and I also talked about, is there a problem with, you know, fires and whatnot, and he said, yeah, there, there is problems with fireworks, but the thing that hopefully you guys realize is, there's our fireworks, which are considered safe and sane, they're cones, sparklers, things along that nature, and then there's the stuff that are in Wyoming, which are the stuff that go in the air, Fourth of July, you guys go out, I'm sure you see all the fireworks that are going off, that's not our fireworks, our fireworks stay on the ground, they shoot sparks into the air. So, hopefully, you guys can discern that, what's legal in Colorado, and what's, what's not. I was in Wyoming over the weekend, and there's seven warehouses on the, on the border of Colorado and Wyoming, and those are not to sell Wyoming people, those are to sell, you know, the Colorado people, what they call the, the good stuff, I guess.
Okay, any questions for Mr.?
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And I believe we had another gentleman that wanted to speak, and again, if you'll state your full name for the record and your address.
My name is Britton Cottrell, and my address is 4327 West 31st Street, that's in Greeley, and I actually work with TNT Fireworks, and I echo much of what was just mentioned, and talking about the process of ordering product and things like that, all of that has been allocated and done, you know, months in advance. Leases, again, that, that takes place regarding each location, may be different, but I wanted to speak a little bit more to the fireworks themselves, and the safe and sane fireworks that, that we all sell here in Colorado, that we are regulated to sell within the state of Colorado. You know, those safe and sane fireworks were designed for states like Colorado that experienced dry seasons. California is one of those states that, that has understood this, and they burn up a lot down there, and yet they don't ban safe and sane fireworks, and I think there are a couple reasons to consider, that when you do an all-out ban of fireworks in totality, it often sends people, you know, to the black market, to other states, they're going to get their fireworks, but now, when they get their fireworks, they're not going to be lighting them in their driveway or their streets, where it is pretty safe to light those safe and sane fireworks, those fountains that, that don't go very high, and they're not very wide, they're very safe to light in the driveway, but now, they don't want to be caught, and so they're lighting them in backyards, they're lighting them out when they're camping, or various places that now seem to be an even greater danger, and even greater risk than if we were to promote safety and teach our citizens that, you know, we don't hate fireworks, but what we want to do is have a safe environment, we want you to use fireworks that we sell locally, and we want you to use them properly, and the street, those paved areas are so much better than having somebody hide in their backyard, where indeed, I think those, those chances could, excuse me, go up, and so I would just ask you to consider, I think you, you know, for your time and, and consideration for us, I represent a lot of nonprofit groups, and that's really my job, is I work with nonprofits, and many of these local entities, they rely on these fundraising opportunities for their, their students, often sporting teams and club teams that need to travel throughout the summer, many churches and other nonprofits that are raising money specifically, perhaps for mission-type trips or other things, I think it has a greater impact than, than just the person that you might see selling that firework at that, at that stand, and so I would just ask you to consider how banning the, the sale of fireworks has an even greater impact on that.
Mr. Conti has a question.
Thank you, you did speak to, obviously, that the ordering, that's already, you know, that horse, horse has already left the barn, but as far as you're reserving booth spaces or, you know, tents, or, you know, places where you're going to sell them, what's the lead time that you need on that kind of stuff?
You know, I, I would say that in, in many cases, with respects to tents and things like that, we have tent companies that... like that, we have tent companies that need to make a living as well. And they can't be wondering whether or not, we, we lease all of our, our tents. And so in a case like that, they need some assurances from us that we're not just going to drop an order the week before, you know, they had planned for their staffing to provide tents. In some cases, they've purchased tents just for this occasion. And so oftentimes, we do sign leases that include deposits on those locations for tents and lease spaces that we would lose, in a sense, if a ban were to take place so late in, in the season.
And then as, as far as the land to pitch those tents on, those also have to be reserved months, years?
You know, some of those, we are already working on some locations for, for next season. And so some of them are very early. I, I can't speak to every single one. Some of them do have out clauses perhaps and, and some do not. And generally, we, we seek high-profile retail locations and, and we have to talk to those businesses months in advance in order to secure those, those spots.
So really, this date that we're talking about, June 12th, is way too late for almost any aspect of your business, whether you, we're talking about the supply of fireworks or we're talking about the tents you have to rent or the, or the lease, leases for the ground that you're going to pitch the tents on. It's, the horse has already left the barn for all of that. It's, it's now just kind of a matter of, of whether or not you're going to call it a loss for the season?
In, in some cases, yes. But, you know, in other cases, you, there's time to pull the trigger on, on June 12th. I, I think with respect to licensing, that is one of the things that Arapahoe County has done. They've put, put accepting any licensing on hold right now. And so that, yeah, that has not allowed us to, to make a decision or to know are they going to proceed with allowing those licenses to, to process or not.
I have a question for you, Mr. Cottrell. How many locations in Arapahoe County do you normally have or were you planning to have?
This year, we were planning to have three locations.
Three locations. And I didn't ask Mr. Witherell about that, but I think it's eight. Eight. Okay. Thank you.
Now, we do have, sorry, to clarify, we do have other locations in Arapahoe County that's not...
In the city.
Yes, correct. And so oftentimes, I, I think that's another thing that the county makes a decision and it causes the city, you know, to look at it. So potentially, it could, you know, have a snowball effect and we, we hope that that wouldn't happen.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Caitlin Cahill to come forward. She's our zoning manager and just ask her, her thoughts on this.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Caitlin Cahill, the zoning and animal control manager. So all firework stands are regulated as per the Land Development Code regulations. I do have the compliance requirements and provisions in front of me. A couple of those that I can kind of let you know about are that basically, we have the fireworks permits go through our building department. So they do require a permitting process. Zoning is ultimately responsible for those, although they do require that they get inspections from the building department as far as electrical and things like that. They are required to get approval from the engineering department. So we do a referral for access to those sites. They are required to have a lease agreement in place with where they're renting property. They are required to meet the fire code, the International Fire Code Regulations for Temporary Structures. And basically, no, it says no stand shall be permitted to operate between, or no stand shall be permitted to operate prior to June 15th or after July 7th. So we receive those permits into our office. It is a $500 fee plus a $250 deposit that's refundable after they're inspected and cleaned up. They do have to be cleaned up by July 13th. And we do have one application that's been received. We obviously don't want to process anybody's application until we receive a decision on this ordinance. And we have notified that applicant that we will put it on hold. We also don't want to cash their check if there's going to be a ban in place. So we are currently going to rediscuss the permitting process and how we want to proceed after decisions made today, one way or the other.
So the timing is if, if we continue this to June 12th, correct, June 12th was the proposed date, then that gives very little time to get those permits reviewed, the locations inspected and permits issued if in fact there is not a ordinance or if there's a high, I guess I, what I'm trying to say is, help me with this, Ron, if, if I'm messing this up. The period that we're concerned about is from May 31st through July 5th, isn't it? Or June?
Well, it would be if we're looking at, if you're going to continue this to June 12th, which by the way, that's the first meeting in June. That's why that, that date was picked because the board's not here the, the week before. So the, the ban, the ban would start, if, if the board were to decide to adopt the ordinance, it would start on June 12th. And actually, the way it's structured, it'd run for the remainder of the year, although it could be lifted at any point. The, the language of the ordinance allows the ban to be lifted if the fire danger were to, to change. So, and I'm not, I, I mean, there's different ways to go at this, but one is, I think, that if the board wanted to go ahead and continue this to June 12th, but wanted to make sure that the, in the event the board decides not to do the ban at that point, in order to allow things to be ready for the firework operators to get going, we could go ahead and start processing the permits, perhaps not actually issue the permits until after the hearing on the 12th, but we could go ahead and do the inspections and do all the...
That possible.
The legwork.
Yeah, we can do all the legwork on them and just hold the checks if that's what we choose to do. And I mean, we, I think we had seven last year is, is the, the information that I was given. I was not in charge of zoning during the fireworks season last year. So I believe we had seven that went in front of us and got, got applied for, but we can certainly process those no problem and just have them wait to be issued until we make a decision.
Sounds like there's around 11 this year, at least from the folks that have been here this morning, and there could be more out there, but...
Yeah, and it, it would, I think the biggest issue would be if we made a decision on the 12th and then didn't start getting them in until the 13th or the 12th and tried to have them ready by the 15th.
Yeah.
And, and I would just throw out there that although we've, the motion, motions we have in front of you are twofold. One is to adopt the ordinance, the other is to continue it to June 12th. There is a third option, which is just to decide not to do the ordinance at this time.
That is an, an alternative.
Yeah.
Comments or questions from any of the Commissioners? Preference? Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, I keep, we're sort of between a rock and a hard place here with the uncertainty. And I keep wanting some more flexibility here. But I'm, I'm not sure, given the uncertainty of nature, that the problem with this ordinance is that it's, it's a red light, green light, and it doesn't give us a yellow light option. And, and so that's, that's really sticky for me and I'm, I'm kind of seeking some guidance, I guess, to see if there are other areas that do other things. I'm wondering, so here's, here's an actual question. I knew I'd get to something sooner or later. And that is, it costs $500 to apply. If, if a person applied and they put down their $500 and then we banned fireworks, would they get their $500 back because you'd already inspected and done all that stuff?
So the permit fee that's set in the Land Development Code is a $500 plus a $250 deposit. The $250 is refundable if the permitee completely cleans up the site and calls for a cleanup inspection.
Right. But the $500, if, if I'm sort of batting, because it's going to cost me $500 to apply, which we're going to, which we could recommend that people do before the 12th so that they get all that in motion. And then let's say on the 12th, we decide to ban them, then I lose my 500 bucks, right?
Correct. Yes, that would be, that's the, the permit.
Well, we, we could make a decision, though, to refund that money. I don't...
That was kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah. And I thought that's what we were...
Yeah.
Potentially talking about doing because we were going to not deposit the checks...
Correct.
Even though we were going to start the inspection process. I think the idea is that we would give them...
And I'm okay with that. If that helps with the, with a more customer service friendly approach. I understand and respect that this is a, a difficult timeline for a lot of these vendors and I have no problem holding those checks if, if the board would like to do that.
Yeah. I mean, we haven't decided that, but, but it is an option that's on the table. Okay.
And let me ask one clarifying question and then Commissioner Holan. To Mr. Carl, we, you did say that this, this ordinance can be lifted at any time. We're specifically instituting this ordinance for unincorporated Arapahoe County for the entire year of 2018. And we're specifically prohibited from adopting this kind of ordinance during a, a certain period surrounding or up, leading up to the Fourth of July, except where we find that there's a high risk...
Right.
High danger risk of fire...
High fire danger.
High fire danger. So by lifting the ordinance, that would lift it for the entire year unless we specific... Can we lift the ordinance or make the ordinance not in effect for certain periods during the year?
Well, you can, you can ban fireworks excluding the period of May 31st to July 5th. You can ban fireworks for that whole time if you choose to do so without making a finding of high fire danger. The statute gives you that ability. Does, does that answer your question?
Yes. Should July 5th. Commissioner Holan.
This is a, a real tough decision for me primarily because we don't have all the facts. And, you know, I, I support us at least doing the continuance, if not outright tabling of our, of our resolution or ordinance. But the danger, the danger is there and to, to the point of the two entrepreneurs that presented their case today, I, I will, you know, I under, I understand that the difference between safe fireworks and dangerous elevated fireworks, having witnessed it one year in, myself, just off of Arapahoe Row, where, where our neighbor came in and bought a whole bunch of the elevated spitter things that go up in the air and such. And he set his, his pine tree on fire. The thing burst into flame, became a flaming torch. Fortunately, the fire department got there in sufficient time to extinguish it before it went to the, went on to literally burn his house down. So, and that was, you know, that was a clear example of misusing those fireworks to the detriment of the community. Not to mention the fact that even exploding fireworks, talks to most firemen who have to respond to blown off fingers and hands, it, it's a danger. But I understand that it's, that there has been funds already expended, work has already been done to purchase or, or soon to purchase inventory for that period of time. And I, I just don't think from a, to, to make a decision to, to ban at this point, I think is way too premature because we don't understand the, the fire da, damage or danger. So I would, I would certainly support just to continuous, continue and if, and if there's anything that we can do from your standpoint to assist these, these organizations that are going to come in and ask for it. And of course, there's always the issue of illegal sale, the back of a pickup truck and go up to Wyoming and fill your truck up and put a little sign up and you're, you're selling illegally. So I, I, I think that would be our appropriate procedure at this point.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions or I would entertain a motion? Commissioner Jackson.
Let's see. Okay. I'm going to do the alternate motion here. I move to continue this general business item regarding the consideration of the adoption of proposed ordinance number 201801, banning the sale, use and possession of fireworks to the boards. This is June 15th, but June 12th, public hearing agenda at 9:30 a.m.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Jackson and a second by Commissioner Holan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, that motion carries. Do we need to direct staff concerning accepting applications, holding the checks? I think that was the consensus and I'm seeing nodding heads. Any objection to processing applications, holding the checks until after June 12th? Okay. No objections. So, so directed. Are there any Commissioner comments at this time? Commissioner Jackson?
Talking a lot today. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that many of us here, in fact, all of us here, sitting on the dais today, attended Aurora Mayor Hogan's funeral on Sa, on Saturday. And it was a, a beautiful ceremony and a fitting tribute to a man who contributed much to his community. Public servants are often not recognized, but Mayor Hogan, no matter where you look in the city of Aurora, touched that city in so many visual ways, from the light rail to the Entchute Campus and the C-470 route and so many other small, small and large projects and people's lives that he touched, he will be greatly missed.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Holan?
I would only, having known Mayor Hogan, Steve, for, for many, many years, I only echoed the comments of my colleague. I think what was so striking about this very competent public servant was the fact that he maintained a very humble and approach to, to his position in his, in the successful projects in which he was able to bring a collaborative effort throughout the county and, and throughout the cities in, in the, in the area, whether it was transportation or, or working to preserve buffer land through our open space program at Buckley Air Force Base, which will help ensure the continued operation of that facility. Or the first executive director of the E-470 Highway Authority, which started with a small amount of community raised money and bonds and now is a $200 million a year revenue source for, for, for this area, helping relieve traffic and, and providing an alternative transportation route. Steve was a, was a dear friend. I remember going over to his house many times for, for dinner with, with my wife Debbie and he'd take us down to his little wine cellar and he was definitely an expert in, in the consumption, particularly the consumption, but also the, the ability to, to get fine wines from all over the world. And those, those candid and, and friendly and sometimes emotional meetings will be forever in my memory. will be forever in my memory. The final thing that I'll say about him is that he was a true leader during the, uh, the century twenty-one shootings at, in Aurora, uh, where he was, uh, all of a sudden thrust upon an international stage, uh, to be compassionate and, and, and stabilize a, a very dysfunctional, uh, period of, of our time with so many terrible, terrible losses. Uh, he will be missed and, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad that I could call him a friend.
Thank you. Mr. Conti.
I think it's already been aptly noted, um, you know, his many accomplishments that he had in his, uh, you know, throughout his decades of, of public service. Um, I would just like to say that our hearts do go out to the city of Aurora, uh, the enormous shoes that there are to fill, um, in that spot of mayor and, uh, we will be, uh, keeping them in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Not, and his family, you're right. Correct. Our meeting is adjourned.